Good evening, everyone. It's six. Well, the clock says seven, but it's six o'clock. They haven't fixed our clock yet. So I will call the November meeting of the Beaver Creek City Planning Commission officially to order. And if you would read the roll, please, ma'am.
Mr. Fountain?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Ms. Palumbo?
Here.
Mr. Self?
Here.
Agenda. Are we good on the agenda, staff? Everything's good, okay? I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second up.
And I have a second. We'll do that by general consensus. Thank you very much. Minutes from October. Any additions, corrections, changes, praises to Melissa for her usual good job?
Yeah, noted she did. So how could there possibly be a correction or amendment? So, okay. I move we accept the minutes as published.
Okay.
Mr. Chad, second?
And I have a second, and we'll do that by general consensus. Got it. Okay, this evening, we have two public hearings, a decision item, and a subdivision. So without further ado, let's get going with the first public hearing.
This is case number PUD 06-6. It's an amendment of 10 of 25 on an application filed by POD Design, 100 North Woods Boulevard, Suite A, Columbus, Ohio 43235. The applicant requests approval to amend PUD 06-6 to allow the maximum density for a part of the residential portion to increase from three dwelling units an acre to six dwelling units an acre. The property is located on the south side of Colonel Glenn Highway and west of I-675. Further described as Book One, Page Three, Part of Parcel Two on the Greene County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Just so you will know, the way we do our public hearings here, first of all, we have a presentation by the applicant, then we have a presentation by our staff. At that point, I will open the floor to any input from folks who are here. I'd ask you to limit yourself to three minutes, if you would. Once that's all done, we'll see if there's any written input. At that point, I'll close the public hearing, and we will discuss it and hopefully come to a decision. So I presume we have someone here from the applicant.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name's Todd Foley. I'm with POD Design. I'm here on behalf of my client and also the property owner, Jason Woodard, here to discuss our request to, as mentioned, to amend the current PUD that's in place over the property that is on Mission Point Boulevard. That request is to increase the density to six dwelling units an acre from what was previously approved at three to the acre, so that my client, a national builder who constructs single-story attached apartments that have garages, attached market rate, high-quality product, to bring that to the city of Beaver Creek. They've been interested in trying to become a part of this community for a while, and this opportunity presented itself. And so we're here to talk about that, answer any questions that everyone might have. We're fully aware of what exists today on the project in the form of the approved previous PUD and the steps that the city has taken to have that project, mixed-use project that, you know, goes north all the way up to Colonel Glenn, all the way and south beyond our project. We're focusing on just approximately 31 acres gross acreage of that project. We're not here requesting anything that affects the entire PUD that's previously approved. And as a part of our project, as our map that was included with the presentation showed, we'll be also responsible for extending a portion of Mission Point Boulevard south. There's kind of two parcels that we're looking at that will contain the residential product that I mentioned. And so that's another positive with this, is that we're going to get, the city's going to get some additional infrastructure improvement that hopefully will continue to help spur development with this project as it was intended from the very beginning. I am going to pivot just slightly and ask the property owner to come up as well, just to add some characteristics and thoughts from his perspective, knowing that I believe you're familiar with Jason and some of the work that he's been focusing on. And then I'll circle back, we'll wrap it up, and go from there.
Good evening, members of the commission. Jason Woodard, good to see you again. Yeah, as the landowner, just wanted to indicate our support for this change. It is consistent with the uses that were originally proposed, just, you know, increasing the density. But, you know, that original PUD was approved, you know, approaching 20 years now, so, you know, things have changed a little bit. But we feel that, you know, it'll be a great addition to what we're doing with the rest of the site. Will be complimentary to, you know, our efforts, and I think will help spur the pace of that development. And so we're excited to have them. We feel fortunate to have a, you know, national developer with a great reputation that will do a, you know, high-quality project that I ultimately believe will be, you know, additive to our site and I believe the Beaver Creek community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just a few other comments here, and then I'll wrap this up. I mean, I think as the original PUD was thought about, you know, this is a great transitional use, this type of rental housing. We have, you know, a single-family to the west, and as we start to think about what makes up a good mixed-use kind of development with, you know, office uses and retail and all the things that were envisioned as a part of the original PUD, these are market rate, you know, high-quality, so these are not a rental product that's, has any kind of subsidy or low income. This is, this particular developer focuses on market rate type of development to the tune of, you can anticipate rents of $2,000 a month per unit. These are one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. Every unit has an attached garage. So these are not, when we, when we talk about multifamily or apartments, the, they're not necessarily what you may think about in the traditional sense of going vertical. These are all single stories. So we feel it's very appropriate, even with the request for the increase in density, to stay within the intent and the goal of the original PUD. Along that same lines, things like setbacks and buffering and all the things that were considered as a part of the PUD, we're not requesting to modify those in any way. We're able to work within that framework. So, you know, setbacks to the west will be adhered to. There's an existing stream that comes behind the office building and heads south. We're going to be preserving that and working around that area with, even with the extension of Mission Point. There's some easements that kind of bifurcate the site right through the area that we're focusing on, that will present some unique challenges for whatever we're to develop there, and we think we're a good use to help navigate that area as well. You know, it's, it's going to help with providing housing for the city and also with the diversity of the type of housing that exists in the city. And so overall, the staff report you're going to hear, we're in agreeance with all those comments. We don't have any retort to those in any way, and definitely happy to answer any questions here when that time's appropriate. But we really appreciate the opportunity to be here and excited to potentially try to move forward, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Colin Carville. I'm the city planner for the city of Beaver Creek. Once again, we are here for the, this requested amendment for the Mission Point residential portion of this PUD. It's PUD 06-6, Amendment 1025. Once again, the proposal here is to increase that density that was laid out for three dwelling units an acre to six dwelling units an acre for a portion of this residential area. Just to get our bearings here, so the southern star, this is a map of kind of the western part of Beaver Creek. That star at the bottom of your screen there is where we're at this evening. Mission Point, the PUD 06-6 is in that northwestern star at the top of the screen there. This is just a rough idea of who was all notified. We notified all property owners within 500 square feet of the parcel. So obviously, it kind of crosses jurisdictions here into Riverside to the west and to the north and south, and it's all highway to the east. So no one on the, past the highway was notified because that was over 500 square feet. But that's just a general idea of the radius of who was notified this evening. And once again, just going over that summary, request summary one more time. It's to increase that residential density from three dwelling units an acre to six dwelling units an acre, and it just applies to the portion of the residential area of the overall development. Here's a kind of a close-up of that PUD. So I'm starting on the right side of the screen there. You can see it's called out that PUD in kind of that, that light blue, and then there's just the aerial of the, of the GIS aerial of the, of the PUD with kind of that light blue borderline, just so we kind of know where the area that encapsulates this whole PUD. Just going over the existing conditions, what was previously outlined. So this, as mentioned, it was previously approved on August 23, 2007, almost coming up on 20 years now. On the total sites, plus or minus 134 acres. The majority is designated for office development. As it stands, there's currently 93,000 square feet of office space currently developed there with an additional 137,000 that's, that's been approved. Hasn't broke ground yet, but it has been approved for that site. The approved land uses in the area are O-1 office, office research park, general research park. There's some provisions outlined for hotels and hospitals. Retail use is consistent with our B3 zoning, and obviously that residential component that we'll get more into here this evening. Now, what was called out in the original terms of the residential area within the PUD 06-6, it was up to 30 acres designated for residential use. Once again, the current limit was three dwelling units, which would give rise to approximately 90 units max. It's loc, it was located in the southwest corner of the site, but it was designed with the intent to be flexible and made develop as residential or non-residential based on kind of market conditions. So let's jump into kind of what those market conditions are looking like. So obviously, things change in 20 years. Office demand has declined since 2007. It's a combination of the rise of remote hybrid work with sufficient office already. There's obviously some more developments going on on Colonel Glenn for office space. But obviously, residential demand increased, and the reason for that is we're running out of land, and there's also an appetite for more smaller, maintenance-friendly housing. So we think that the amendment that's proposed here this evening, it kind of current, reflects those current market trends, and it supports the, kind of the needs of, and needs of our community and kind of what we see as planners as well. So what we use for amendments and rezonings and things like that is our land use plan. Our land use plan, this area was designated within VPA 8. Unfortunately, it didn't give any really additional guide, guidance or, in case of amendments. It really just kind of outlines what was approved in the PUD, which gives staff a little flexibility here, but basically it calls out that it's a mixed-use development in proximity to Wright-Patt Air Force Base, and it supports a variety of office, commercial, and residential uses. And it also outlines the PUD allowed up to 1.45 million square feet for total mixed-use development. I already kind of called out those additional statistics earlier on in my presentation. So looking at the first context plan here, so that light blue is currently developed office space. The pink in that northeast part of that image is proposed new office space that is technically already approved by Planning Commission. And then that yellow area to the south is kind of the area in discussion here this evening. So the PUD amendment will accomplish a few things. So it'll correct some inconsistencies within ordinance 07-01. It was my understanding that there was a lot of kind of changes that were made kind of on the fly by city, city council during the approval of this ordinance. So some things were kind of lost in translation. For example, in the concept plan that was approved, it only shows 15 acres of residential when it's, in kind of the text, it calls out for 30, 30 acres. So it'll clean up things like that. And once again, it'll focus, what they're proposing is focusing more on that single-story apartment rentals, which will include an attached garage, and it's designed to have that, those maintenance-free, lower-impact housing that's kind of been voiced by our community in mind here. While, you know, there were some obviously good aspects of the PUD, including that 50-foot landscape buffer to the west and south. Obviously, the west is primarily where that residential component is in Riverside, so that will be unaffected and maintained. So no changes in, in that amendment to the PUD. It's just the density here. So here's a side-by-side of the concept plan that was approved in 2007, and then this would be the kind of the newly proposed concept plan, and I'll have a blown-up version of the 2025 plan on my next slide. But as you can see, there's kind of that, that stretch of single-family, low-density housing to the southwest. I shouldn't say single-family. It's up to three dwelling units an acre, but has the flexibility there. But then, as you can see in the 2025 proposed concept plan, and Randy did a wonderful job in the staff report, in the little notation at the bottom, there's a footnote there that kind of really outlined the exact acreage changes to what would reflect what's actually happening here in the, in the concept plan. So he has the exact callouts there. But as you can see, on the right there, just in that middle, to kind of serve as that transitional density for residential, that's where that six dwelling units an acre would be, would be allowed. And that, that full southern, low-density would remain at the three dwelling units an acre. So here's that blown-up version. This is just kind of turned on its head a little bit. West, far west of that would be on the northern side of the property and far east, or your, or the right side of the screen is the southern end. So as you can see, that, that southern end would still maintain that three dwelling units an acre for that less-dense residential properties. And it's already been referenced a couple times this evening, but as planners, we kind of look at these developments, and we were in favor of this higher density because it serves as a really good transition from, you know, office, office density, or office park to a little more, you know, attached, single-family rental properties to hopefully in the near future, maybe some single-family homes to the, to the far south of the development. So it's that nice gradual transition that we're looking for, that we, you know, encourage as planners, which will minimize traffic, noise, and visual conflicts throughout the entire development. Access and circulation, it'll be, as already mentioned, there'll be an extension from Mission Point Boulevard as shown here. There'll be kind of that continuation there, and there's kind of, we're going to stub that southern part out to hopefully encourage more development on frankly, a property that's, you know, hasn't developed as quickly as, as anticipated. So hopefully, this change would, would kind of help spur some more development in that area, which, which we're in favor of. And there, at, for this specific development, there will be no direct connection to the west neighborhood. Obviously, that may occur in future development, but in what is being proposed this evening, as far as the concept plan, there's no, no proposed connection there. I can zoom out a little bit farther just to point that out. That doesn't capture it well. Well, I don't have a good slide for it, but yeah, there's just not, you can see kind of on that bottom southwest part of the screen here, there's an existing stub street that is not encapsulated by this envelop, development here. The only thing, the slide that I did omit this evening that I, that I forgot to include is kind of the, the outline of where we're at in this process. So this is the first stage of a pretty lengthy process for, for kind of ultimate approval for this development. We're going over obviously just this amendment to the density and the concept plan this evening. That will go on regardless of recommendation unless it's tabled this evening. It'll go on to our city council, where they'll have another public hearing, and then they'll have an additional meeting after that to vote on the amendment. Then we're back here for the site plan, which will go over kind of the architectural development, architectural elevations, the, the site plan layout itself, where those homes will be kind of positioned on, on the property, and kind of go into more detail here. So this is a very kind of surface level. We do this intentionally just so developers don't, you know, sink a lot of money into something that ultimately may not be approved. So that's kind of where we're at this evening. So happy to answer any questions at the conclusion of this public hearing, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Got us really up to speed on that. Okay, public hearing time. If there are folks here who wish to speak either in favor of, against, or simply have questions, don't be shy. Step right on up, give us your name and address, and have at it.
Can I look at the thing?
Well, come, you got to come up and talk to, talk to the microphone and introduce yourself, please.
My name's Amy Clark.
And you are from?
I live in Riverside. I live on Hendon.
Street number, please?
6027 Hendon.
Thank you.
I just, it was hard to see on the, I just was curious to, to see, it was hard to see from the, it was kind of blurry.
So you're, the question you're asking is?
I just, I couldn't really see like-
Oh, okay.
-where exactly it's proposed.
Okay, it's the, it's the, the amoeba that is outlined with the yellow, with the yellow boxes.
I just was trying to see like where I am in comparison to that.
Okay, well, that stubs, if you almost see that stubbed street right in the middle of the, of the outlined amoeba. It's, no, I'm sorry, it's to the left. That's, that's the street that's stubbed out.
Okay, I didn't know if there was like a, a paper. I can't make it out, so.
Do we have that, staff, do we have that on paper that you can show her? Okay, good.
Okay. Well, I can look at it here. I just, there you go.
Fine, thank you. Okay, now the eye chart is over. Other, other comments, questions, et cetera? Please, don't be shy. I knew I'd get somebody if I waved to gavel around.
Denise Donaldson, 272 Williston.
Thank you.
So these will be apartments?
Correct.
Single, not like double-high, right? Okay?
Single story. That's what, that's what they're telling us. You'll see more of the specifics at the next public hearing, which will be the specific site plan.
Okay. So he spoke about a 50-foot buffer between this project and Riverside property?
Correct.
What about mature, existing trees that run along?
That's something that we look at at specific site plan, but we've been pretty good about that.
Okay. When do you think this project might get started? I know this is just the beginning, but, I mean, you guys have been doing this for years, so.
We'll ask the, we'll ask the developer when it comes time for us to discuss this.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We've got your question noted.
Thank you.
Did we get any written input? Last chance. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and I will start on my right.
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Vice Chairman?
So, I actually did have a question about the buffer. Because it says in the PUD, it just is a 50-foot buffer. Like, it doesn't define what can happen in that buffer. Is that just a building? No building within 50 feet?
Yeah, mhm, yeah, and we'll, it's pretty loud. It's a 50-foot, no, no build zone. Obviously, we, we kind of negotiate that landscape plan at the site plan stage, but yeah, no, no buildings within 50 foot, 50, 50, 50 feet, yeah.
So we wouldn't need to put that into this, this approval?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, that's all I had for you. I have one for the applicant, though. If you don't mind just addressing the timeline question?
Yeah, so if we kind of fast-forward, being approved through the, all the necessary channels here, we would anticipate kind of that 12-month period of time from that approval, and that's final engineering plans, it's permitting, all that. Construction would start somewhere in the neighborhood of 12 months after that. Weather-dependent, kind of depends on where that falls. But, and I think the ultimate, and as was mentioned, we're very early on this process. We're still evaluating the site plan and the design and all that. This would most likely be a single-phase project, you know, the construction of the road and then construction of the both sides. This would not be something that would extend on, you know, for two, three, four years. Like, it would be kind of a build and be done, which helps with kind of the low impact. And with this being single-story product, the impact from a construct, construction perspective is a little less intense than big office buildings and multi-story apartments, things like that, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next.
Question for staff. We'll probably get more into this at the specific site plan stage, but for runoff requirements, I'm assuming since, since Riverside is, is right on the border of this potential development, same requirements that has to be contained, it can't, it can't affect any, any outside?
Correct, yeah. It can't make their property conditions worse.
Yeah, okay. Is there any concern at this point in time with the single in and out for office base, potential office base and this, this residential area on the Colonel Glenn?
You know, that's a, that's a great question. The ultimate kind of decider of that is, is our fire department. So I, I think once he gets an idea of the layout and how those homes sit and how that access is, is determined, he'll kind of make that ultimate ruling. If Randy wants to speak on it, that's totally fine, but that'll be more at the specific site plan stage, once he has eyes on how those houses sit.
Sure, okay. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I've got a number of questions, so let's begin, Colin, as long as you're standing up there. Can you quickly recap again? My apologies, quicker than I could write it out. The sequence from today forward to us, to the council, then back to us, and back to council, and so on.
Sure.
I want to make note of what we're here for today compared to future meetings.
Yeah, so today, strictly looking at the, the PUD itself and the language within that, so we'll be kind of determining if, to make a, if we want to make that change to the, to the density requirement as well as kind of the overall concept plan. And then that'll, your recommendation will go on to, to city council, they'll have another public hearing, very similar to, to ours this evening. And then it'll be a closed meeting, or obviously not a public meeting, but they'll make the ultimate ruling at a, at a following, subsequent city council meeting. And that would kind of give, give grace to the, to the density change if it were to move forward in that regard. If it were to move forward in that regard, then it would go to the specific site plan stage where we go over the architecturals, things like that. That's one, one reading here at Planning Commission and then one at city council.
Hold that thought. So going back to the, then tonight, one of the issues that was requested by the applicant and you guys was the elimination of Section 2 Item 2, from the 2007 approval by the city council, which stated the 30-acre limit for residential. And fortunately, we got that in our materials. It was an August 23, 2007 meeting that the council approved Section 2, Item Number 2, that limits it to 30 acres. So is that what's asked to be removed by us tonight or by the next city council meeting?
City council meeting. City council make that ultimate.
So you're not asking us to comment, even though the size of the residential development being proposed is greater than 30 acres?
So we, we would have you, the recommendation, yeah, it, it would be approval to, to remove that, and then?
But it still goes to council, since they're the ones that initially approved it anyway.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Given that, thank you, Colin, that's all I had. So our council, Lounsbury, I have a question for you, we've talked a lot about this tonight to Riverside, I'm familiar with the area and I've been there to the Riverside side and the Mission Point side, both from when we approved the Mission Point way back a few months ago, and then to the Riverside. What will we now, or possibly in the site plan area, have the ability as the planning commission to really do that would govern the applicant's, you might say, approach to Riverside? I don't want to box Riverside in as a sister city or box the applicant in because of what we decide tonight, specifically emergency accesses, high multifamily or single-family development adjacent to an existing neighborhood not in our control. So our relationship to what we can do next to a city is, is where I'm confused, if anything.
So in turn, I think there's multi-parts there.
Yeah, it's all related to us being right next to Riverside and what can we do-
Access points, specific site plan would be a specific site plan issue where we would get an opinion, I think, from fire about whether there was enough access, and I'm sure they would consider both in and outs to getting in and out of Riverside and into our community. Second part of your question was our considerations towards what-
It basically says, we're the planning commission, we make recommendations to our city council, but it all is at some point going to involve what our impact will be of our decisions on a neighboring city which abuts the site. We could make decisions that in, in some ways possibly box in the city Riverside or box in the applicant or both for what the eventual site plan will be, and I'd rather address it now than wait months down the road and the city Riverside, wait a minute, we're not going to let you do any of that.
I mean, Riverside can't stop us from doing stuff in Beaver Creek.
Correct.
So I guess I'm not following as to what, we can do, if practical, practically something that they, they build there makes it so Riverside, the people in Riverside don't want to build a property or do something next to it, that's, that'll affect them, but that doesn't affect our decision here.
Well, a good part of this, this great development, and we've been involved with this for, for months now, I'll just give a couple of quick examples, because I'm familiar with the Riverside area. That's an extremely very narrow street, very old, small homes budding up to a middle school. It's only, you can't see it in that picture, but you can in, in one of the pictures we looked earlier, and I appreciate Mrs. Donaldson and Ms. Clark, who came up and mentioned it. Hendon, the street where the arrow shows for the emergency access in the southern part of it, that's an extremely narrow street with barely room for three cars, and two cars are parking on each side, and you have one car can barely make it down the middle, and at the bottom of the screen of the picture is a middle school. And I can tell, having traversed the area in preparation for our discussion today, the city of Riverside, that whole left quadrant of the Riverside area is governed by Wright-Patt Housing. The whole right is governed by streets with many closures already blocked off by fences, they're all stubbed streets, and then you have the school in the middle. I can see a lot of pushback from Riverside to us if we in any way infer here with a MAC development, MAC or development or in the site plan stage of agreeing to write up to the abutment, which then gets into an easement issue along that edge, as Ms. Clark said. So I'm wondering, could we and should we as a planning commission start talking about things that abut or impact a neighboring city? And it's, it's an issue I've never dealt with, because we've always dealt within Beaver Creek, and I'm confused by what latitude we have.
So it sounds like you're concerned about the traffic in that area and-
Traffic, development, easements, the whole nation notion that it's abutting another city's purview and governance.
So for traffic, whether this is inside the city, next to another city, crosses over into two cities, can never be considered as part of a decision in a rezoning issue.
Okay.
Specific site plan, when we talk about ingress egress, traffic becomes a, a topic that can be addressed. But if it's just to manage like a city street, are the city streets large enough in the city of Beaver Creek to handle the people who live in the city of Beaver Creek, that is not a zoning issue and not one that you can, the Supreme Court's very clear, cannot be considered as part of your decision in making a zoning determination.
And there's nothing back to us, the planning commission, for the city council for a negative impact that we might create to a neighboring city's residents.
Not when you're talking about tra, once again, traffic there, traffic within us, even if it was just our own traffic, we wouldn't be able to consider-
It could be traffic, it could be landscaping, it could be the, the closeness of homes, it's just another city issue, and I've not had to face it maybe others here in the-
Legally, there's nothing that, that, I mean, cities try to work together and you don't want one community to be designed to look one way and the community across the street to look very different, and I think both cities take that into consideration when they put in, in developments, because you, you want it to be consistent, and I think they're doing that in this case with that sort of a transitional period so that there isn't high, high density right next to low density. So that's part of what, why they're, they're doing that, is being good stewards and good neighbors.
Yes, it'll definitely be an improvement for, for what we have, I just was not wanting to discuss or put us in the commission or the council on any possible negativity related to the city Riverside and what they may feel towards their development. It's an extremely heavily focused Wright-Patt area of single-family, multifamily housing, that entire lower quadrant with an extreme amount of closed streets and compact yards and street size being very small, and I, I'm trying to anticipate now what could be coming for us and the council many months down the road.
I mean, I can't, there's political considerations that I would say are council considerations on being good neighbors and those type of things and getting along with communities, that's not part of the PUD process and determining what you guys are doing today, so I don't think-
Got it, thank you.
The easements, I guess I'm having trouble imagining what issues could come up, but they'll be worked through, I mean, if there are easements, there are easements, you've got to work with them, so.
Yeah, I didn't want to get too early into the game, we'll deal with it eventually, I just, the whole notion of being adjacent to another city, a city's residential area is new to me and possibly for others here, and where do we stand legally as well as planning wise?
I think it's, you, you take into consideration the same things you would as if this were in the middle of the city, I don't think it matters that it's adjacent to another city, the considerations you're supposed to take into account when making the determination.
Thank you, thank you for that clarity. I do have one last question, if I could, going back to Colin or Randy, on the issues that we're talking about today compared to when we get to the site plan issue, the notion that the emergency access points were put on that one plan by somebody, either the applicant or yourselves, was that in any way part of the placement or is the emergency access points in that, there's three of them, I believe?
Oh, so you're talking about in the, in the concept plan itself?
Yeah, that's, that's nothing, in other words, the great for the, the notion, the applicant talked about that, it's a buffer and stepping down, that's a great idea and I fully support that. But where you see in the upper right-hand corner of the green area, the, the middle where Hendon Street is and then obviously Mission Point entrance on the left, those were put by you folks or by the applicant, or were they something governed by fire safety issues? I just wonder where they came from.
I think those were incorporated in the, in the two thousand and seven concept plan, and, and just for your awareness, too, this, were that new low-density kind of blob in the, in that southeastern part of the screen is, that's owned by completely, that's not owned by Mr. Woodard, it's, it's owned by a completely different home, property owner, so.
That governed the upper right-hand corner, emergency access as well?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
All right, so we may see that at a future meeting.
Yes, correct.
All right, thank you, Colin, that's all, that's all I had, Mr. Chairman, thank you for letting me discuss that issue.
Sir, if I, if I missed your hand up while the public hearing was, hearing was still on, my apologies, come right on up here and ask your question, I don't want to, I don't want to keep anybody short, and if you'd give us your name and address, please.
Stacy Warner, six zero three nine Hendon.
Okay.
I've been here thirty-five years, and this emergency access here, the, this mayor come from Riverside and spoke to us about the property there, eventually they're going to do something, but he said that there's no way they're going to come through the road that I, we live on, you know, and we live on the street, my brother's stage four cancer and he had to call a medic tonight, and a fire truck couldn't even come down the street, they had to walk from the, the corner to come down our street, you know, and they're wanting to put this big housing thing in there, you know, I understand that you've got to develop something, you know, but, you know, just the amount of houses that are going to be there, the access point, you know, I don't think, I don't know, it's just a lot for that little area that we live in right there.
It'll be taken into consideration, we're not gonna, we're not going to do anything that exacerbates a situation. Okay, folks, my turn. As long as we're talking about that emergency access, well, before we get off the subject, just, we've had this situation before, not necessarily from city to city, but from one plat to another, where the fire department really felt that they needed an emergency access. So what it was, was there was never a paved street put in, but there was like a bike path or a walking path, because the kids that live in your neighborhood in Riverside are going to want to visit the kids that live in this apartment complex and vice versa, and they're going to be either cutting through people's backyards, or if you give them an access, then they'll walk down the bike path to get from one to the other, and that in a true emergency, think of a, a tornado coming through and blocking access into your plat, and the only way to get there is from the Mission Point side. So it'll get worked out.
It's just like on program, right?
Right, but if, it, it, it'll get worked out. We're not gonna, we're not going to do anything that exacerbates a, an already difficult situation. Okay, a couple of other questions for staff. With the number of units that are being put in being more than we previously had, are the two existing accesses off of Colonel Glen going to be sufficient for both the residential, the future residential, should it ever develop, and any additional office space, is that going to be sufficient for all of that?
Our engineer, Jeff Mormon, will take a look at that, the specific site plan stage, didn't have any red flags initially here on, on the proposal.
Good. And once again, just, I don't mean to, to speak for staff, but I know in the past where we've had an emergency access situation like this, we, we figured it out so that it's not going to make an already prob, an already difficult situation more difficult.
Yeah, and I just wanted to reiterate, too, that, that connection the gentleman is concerned about, that's outside the scope of this project.
Right.
So that's a, that's a separate landowner, what's, what's being talked about this evening does not have a southern boundary that would even come close to that, that part of it.
Exactly, okay, so it, it won't be, for the Riverside folks there on Herndon, it isn't part of this application, so no, don't worry about it right now. The green circle is not, we're just, and that was my other question, just to, just to make sure that I understand this, the, the parcel that is outlined by the yellow boxes is what we're discussing tonight.
Exactly right.
The one outside by, outlined by the green boxes is still three units to the acre and it is owned by-
Purely conceptual, yeah.
-a different person and is not under consideration tonight.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
And if it were to ever become under consideration, everyone here would be notified the same way.
Exactly. And the only other thing is, and I know this, this came up just a footstomp, the, the no, the no-build zone and existing trees and so forth, we deal with that all the time and existing boundaries, and it's been, staff, staff has been very good about preserving as many trees as, as possibly, possibly done so that it, it, and it's good for the developer too, because he doesn't have to plant them, they're already there. So that's all I've got, gentlemen, and our, this staff member, second helpings.
No problem.
We all good?
No problem.
Okay, then I guess I need, I guess I need a, a motion.
Mike, just a quick thing I wanted to say, I'm just going to hand, I'm going to pass around a legal pad that anyone in the audience can put their email on, I'd be happy to send over the staff report within the coming days here, and, and that will include these images here, so.
Great.
Expect a legal pad coming around shortly.
Thanks, great idea. Now we, if, just out, just as a, a quick point here, if you've ever wondered why the Meyer store on Colonel Glen is a reverse of all the other Meyer stores in the area, that was because, had it been built the other way around, all those loading docks would have been next to a condo complex on the Fairborn side, which is directly behind the Meyer store, and we persuaded Meyer to flip their store design so that the loading docks would not be loading and unloading at four AM right next to existing condos. So we, we, we take good care of our neighbors and, and they take good care of us. Okay, now I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PUD six dash six, amendment ten twenty-five, with the attached seven conditions.
Okay.
Second up.
And I have a second, and we will read the roll, please, ma'am.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries five zero, and we'll be looking forward to that specific site plan. Okay, second public hearing, PUD twenty-five dash eight, Club twenty-seven.
This is case number PC twenty-five dash eight, conditional use on an application filed by Troy Golf two one four two La Grange Road, Beaver Creek, Ohio four five four three one. The applicant requests conditional use approval to allow for a recreational facility located at twelve sixty-one North Fairfield Road. The property is further described as book five, page five, parcel ninety-three on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you, and I have a feeling there's someone here who is going to make the presentation. That would be you.
All right, hello, everyone, Colin Carville, city planner. We are here, for this case is a conditional use request for Club twenty-seven, it is an indoor golf simulator, and we'll jump right into the, into the presentation. I know the applicant is here this evening, but I thought it would probably be, be best for me to just cover it. So, request is a, a conditional use approval to occupy twelve sixty-one North Fairfield Road and for a recreational facility, Club twenty-seven. Just getting our bearings here, it's right at that busy intersection at Dayton Zenian and North Fairfield there, right in the heart of our city, that's that kind of eastern star there, the right side of the screen, western side is the, where we're at here this evening. So the site and the existing conditions, it's, once again, we're familiar with the location, they're going to occupy an existing one thousand five hundred fifty square feet commercial building, there are plus or minus twelve parking spaces adjoining the property, it's not specifically designated for that building, it's part of an overall PUD, but the shared lot itself has plus or minus one hundred thirty-seven spaces. Property's been vacant for several years, I was kind of racking Randy's brain on what was previously in there, I guess it was a video rental store, jewelry store, I'm sure Mike can chime in on, on some of the other things that we have, so, but yeah, it's been, been vacant and, and storage for, for a few years here now. This is just an overview of that PUD, the yellow outline is the space that, that will be occupied here for this golf, these golf simulators. Zoning for the property, it's Zone CPUD eighty-eight three, it has the characteristics of a B-two, B-two zoning district, that's kind of one of our lighter commercial zoning districts, obviously because of that residential component to the west. So to the north, it's another CPUD, I believe directly north of them is a triple-A service station, to the south is the Beaver Creek Jewelry, Jewelers in the, in the same PUD, east is a cryo massage, and I believe directly to the east is storage of it, and then to the west is kind of that R-one-A, a single-family residential component that I previously referenced. For the building itself, once again, I've, I've kind of reiterated a couple times, it's for a golf simulator, so if you're familiar with that, I have a picture of it, what it looks like on, not what his will look like, but what golf simulator, simulators are, it's almost like a virtual, virtual golf, so. almost like a virtual, virtual golf, so. The, kind of the business model behind his approach, rentals will be by the hour via online booking, the building architecture will remain the same, he's just going to be proposing a sign that will be working with him, following the B2 sign code requirements. He is requesting it to be open twenty-four seven, seven days a week. How that will operate is essentially you'd, you would make your reservation online, you'd be given a unique keypad code to access the property. He will have cameras monitoring the main entrance of the property, as well as each individual bay, so he'll have alerts on who's, who's in his facility or around his facility at all times, with, with not having a, a full service employee on, on site at all times. He's also incorporated some, some design measures to, to reduce the noise impact, obviously trying to, not, not the, having the neighbors here, you know, golf balls being hit all day, so, some, some components that he's utilized to, to minimize those impacts, he's incorporating drop ceilings, which will kind of, almost kind of muffle and, and reduce the, the sound area, to reduce kind of the noise, turf flooring, and then he's going to be adding padded foam panels behind this, hitting screens to basically absorb that impact and reduce the noise. He's roughly, he's incorporating roughly one hundred five thousand invested in, in improvements to noise and, and the facility itself. And there's just a, kind of a internal look at what the, what the site plan will look like, so there's the four bays, there's one kind of directly to the north, and then there's the three that are kind of in, in combination, like I said, similar to what, what that'll look like, so. And I've kind of already briefly touched on the parking, but there's no parking dedicated or reserved for this buil, building, it's all just kind of combined within that PUD. There's approximately one hundred thirty-seven spaces, and there's two points of ingress to, to access the site, and one point of egress to the, to the far south, which I can show you, show you here, so there's kind of that loop that'll get you onto, to North Fairfield there. So, staff is recommending approval of this request, obviously Melissa will let us know if there's been anyone that's commented on it, and see if we have any public hearing, but we're recommending approval, subject to the five conditions outlined in your resolution.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? We're getting rather short on folks out in the audience, but I have to ask it, anyone wishing to comment about this? Questions, comments? Did we get any, any written input? Okay, then I will officially close the public hearing and remind everyone that since this is a conditional use, this lives or dies with Planning Commission, it does not go forward to City Council unless we disapprove and the, the applicant wants to appeal it. So with that, I'll just open this to general questions. Anybody?
Okay, I have questions, Mr. Chairman. Colin, you said there's no one from the applicant here, so you speaking on her behalf?
He is here this evening, if you have questions.
I do, yes. Since it's a conditional use, I want to make sure. Yeah, sure, come on up, introduce yourself, sir.
Troy Golf, twenty-one forty-two La Grange Road.
So, I'm curious, drove by this weekend and see this stuff going on already, which is great to see, it's a, kind of like a very, can you put the, before I give a question to Mr. Golf, put the site plan that shows the building outlined? There we go, leave that up if you could. So, was there, and that'll be a great thing, because at the end right there, there's nothing, and so it'll be great to see. But when I read that you wanted to do twenty-four hour operation using security cams, I was just curious, are, if I'm right, how would you figure monitoring that, somebody coming in at three AM on a Tuesday morning to shoot, you know, some golf balls, how is that monitored if something happens to the person? Because you don't have anybody monitoring your security at twenty-four hours a day, you just have the cameras.
Yeah, well, so, I mean, obviously the, the cameras that I would want to put in there would be like, were able to record, or they would be recording. But, yeah, I wouldn't have anybody that would be watching them, I guess, twenty-four hours. It's, the whole business idea is based off of this very similar business in Centerville, and I guess that question never, or that thought never popped in my head, so I'm not really sure.
Are they twenty-four hours?
Yeah.
They are, yeah. Okay, the, the other question I had is, the, the location and the use of that is great, is there any thought on your end, because of storage or vehicles coming in and out to deliver, or equipment or whatever, are we assuming that would go through the front door then?
Of, like, my spot?
Of that spot there? So everything is going to go through that front door where the cameras are, whether it's customers, or whether it's deliveries, or whether it's?
Oh, yeah, so there, there's a side door on the other side, I figured, I, I mean, if I need to be in there, I would probably use that one just to keep, like, I don't know how it would work if I had, wait, hold on.
Yeah, well, the reason I'm asking is, your, your great plans that you gave us, the, the drawings said that it could be a facility of twenty people, and I'm trying to envision twenty people in there at three o'clock on a Tuesday morning, you know, all using the all?
All using the same door?
Yeah, well, or the adjacent bays, and so the operations is what I'm trying to understand, if he can handle twenty people, which is a good size, it really will do great. I can see people going in there at three o'clock on a Tuesday morning before they head off to work, and wanting to get, you know, some practice in, and I wondered how that will happen with any deliveries or whatever that they may have, if everything goes through the front door and that's where the cameras are, right?
Yeah, I, so like, the people that are paying to go in would be using the front door, and anything else could go through the side door, the one on the side, I think, if I'm understanding.
Okay, I didn't, yeah, my apologies, I didn't see a side door.
Oh, yeah.
I only saw a front door, that's why, that's why I'm doing all this.
Yeah, there's, there's two doors, sorry.
Okay, because I've been there, and it's very restricted. Thank you, Mr. Golf, that was the question, is trying to understand the security cam situation.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
But thank you for that, thank you. Colin, I have a question for you, thank you, Mr. Golf. So, I looked through our zoning code, section one fifty-eight and one fifty-three, and I cannot find anything that governs hours for recreational facility.
Correct.
Is that true?
Yeah, not, not to my knowledge, you, you can kind of implement them, certain PUDs outline them, but, like, specific parameters, but yeah, we don't have anything in our code that.
Because there's hours for every other use, but when you get to recreational facility, there was nothing.
Yeah.
So what have we done in the past for recreational facilities, which specifically mentions golf simulators and other things?
You know, I, I think golf simulators for our zoning code's a pretty, pretty new concept, I don't think it was developed in, with, with the thought of, of having one, so I can't comment on golf simulators in general, I don't know if Randy would have any idea of recreational facilities that we've done in the past.
I mean, there, we have gyms, and we have some twenty-four hour gyms in the city, so there wasn't, it's not an unheard of or unprecedented.
So we've never had really a need to worry about hours of operation for?
No, but if you look down the street, the frishest, now vacant, I mean, they had hours of operation attached to that when, when the ASRA came through. So it, it's really on a case-by-case basis, and up to the purview of Planning Commission if they want to limit the hours.
All right. The only, the only other question I had related to that is, again, the three o'clock Tuesday morning, that's right adjacent to a neighborhood, within a few feet, there's, there's, the houses are right there, and if you'll have a lot of activity, usually the conditional use is governed where, and the kind of activity you can have at certain hours, but maybe not.
You can, I mean, it.
Because there's nothing in your, in your, your five?
There's no, no portion of the zoning code that says thou shalt have hours X and Y, but as conditional use, I mean, Planning Commission can certainly ascribe hours if it, if they feel is appropriate. Any patron would still be subject to noise ordinance laws that are found in the police, or purview of the police, so if they're making noise out there, that goes above and beyond what the noise ordinance allows, then they're, you know, they're subject to the criminal prosecution.
Yeah, it's really, it's really well off the beaten track of North Fairfield Road.
There's a lot of mature trees that are along the western side of this PUD as well, they've been growing forever.
And we would have included notifying them about this, or even though it's a conditional use?
Yeah, we, we notify everybody within five hundred feet.
Okay, all right, thank you, Colin, thank you, Randy. All right, yeah, I just, I just have a concern because of the twenty-four hours and, and that it's a budding residential street area, and what would happen should something happen medically with any of the people get bonked by a golf ball or whatever, could be anything. I've got some reservations about it, but I have no more questions, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I, I just have one for, well, first of all, anybody else have questions?
One quick question for staff.
Please.
Is there currently adequate external, or exterior lighting there, and would there be any need to add additional lighting to the building, given that it's twenty-four hour?
I'm not super familiar with the existing conditions, I would hope whatever camera would be implemented at the main door would, would be able to kind of capture it during the night, but.
Troy, do you want to speak on that?
Like, so there's a, a flat roof, and then there's a, a shingled roof, that is like an overhang, where you walk with the path, there's, there's lighting, there's, I believe there's four lights on the outside of my building underneath that overhang that light up that whole area where you'd be walking, and then above the door, there's a light above the door, and then the parking lot all has brand new, like, tall parking lights.
Okay, that's okay, thank you.
Yep.
That's all.
Good point. You might, staff, you, y'all may want to check and see if there is, as part of that original approval, or maybe changes since this was approved, actually approved before I was on Planning Commission. Yeah, right, yeah, that's when they're using candles, to see if there is our usual cutback to twenty-five percent on overhead lighting after all the stores are closed, because we might want to look at that, since this is a store that is not going to be closed, and might want to check that out. You've got a, a really good point, you don't want a dark parking lot at your, your golfers coming in at three AM. The only other question I had for Troy, and that is, since folks would be coming in, making a reservation online, getting their, their, their code to get in, what's to keep them from bringing their buddies and getting five in on, on one number?
Well, that, that's not, there's nothing to keep, that's kind of the idea, you can bring four people, or however many people, and you might.
But you would only use one, you would only use one?
Yeah, you play around a golf like with four people normally, or however many people you take, you go there, play on one bay.
So this isn't just practice, this is actually nine holes or eighteen holes or whatever?
Yeah, you can play nine holes, you can play eighteen holes, there's like mini-games, there's a driving range, there's all different things.
And no walking?
No walking, no weather either.
What a deal, what a deal, good, you answered my question. Yes?
I got a question for you. Is there, like, food and drink?
No.
So, no, is there club rentals, anything like that there?
I didn't plan on club rentals.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah. The, the, it looks like the mac, maximum occupancy is what, what was it, like, twenty? Twenty? Is there, I don't know, three AM on a Tuesday morning, it, what's, what's in place to make sure that we don't exceed that, if, if anything, just the cameras monitoring?
Well, yes, but, two, I don't think that, I mean, normally with these type of simulators, the most you bring is four, just because of, like, I mean, it's just kind of like a standard, I feel like, I don't think anybody, I've never seen groups more than four simulator. It's just too crowded, I don't think anybody would do that, but I guess there's not anything stopping them from doing that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Others? Ladies, gentlemen, okay, if we're all set, then I need a motion.
Motion to approve PC twenty-five eight for conditional use for Club twenty-seven with the, I didn't even look how many, five attached conditions.
I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, a second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second, let's read the roll on this one.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
I vote no.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries five one, sorry, four one, and we'll be looking forward to seeing our new business here. All right, we are finished with public hearings, we have one decision item and one subdivision to go.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Planning Commission is, is aware, we're in the midst of a update to our land use plan and our zoning code, and that process, we've had a steering committee focused on the land use portion of it, and we're starting, we're getting to, closer to the finish line on that, and I appreciate Mr. Self and Mr. Meyer being volunteers on that steering committee, and over the coming months, we're going to transition into the zoning code phase, which build upon, builds upon the land use plan. The zoning code is really the regulations by which we achieve the visions that are going to be found in, in the land use plan. So we're going to have a, another steering committee for the zoning code portion only, and our intent is to try to, is to keep that more in-house, rather than the, the size of the steering committee that we have now for the land use plan. So we're looking to get two volunteers from the Planning Commission to be on that steering committee, probably be around the same commitment once, maybe four or five meetings over the course of five or six months, probably still on Tuesday nights, like we have been over the last several months, and so I wanted to ask Planning Commission if, if we can get two volunteers.
And the time period for this, starting and ending roughly?
It's anticipated probably around February, start around January, February, and go through July, August, or hope, or the intent was originally to hope to wrap it up by mid-July, but I, as we get closer and closer to the end of the year, I find that it's very ambitious to try to get it done by July, but there hasn't been an official change to the schedule, but I would say January to July.
Well, since I would miss the first several meetings, I would still be happy to tag team with somebody.
The zoning code is a little bit more technical-based, then the land use plan's more visionary, how do we see ourselves in the next twenty years, where the zoning code is, as you all know, as the Planning Commission, is very detailed, and, and our legal counsel can attest, it's minutia, minutia-oriented, so if you don't like being down in the weeds, I wouldn't volunteer, because it can get, I've read it several times, and it's, it hasn't been, it's not enjoyable from the first time I read it to the existing time, but.
So you're trying to build up excitement to get a decision now, is that it?
I'm trying not to, I'm not, I'm not trying to oversell it as exciting, but, but important nonetheless.
Absolutely, because it, we have to change as things change, I mean, we had nothing for golf simulator, we had nothing in our zoning code for video rental stores, when they started popping up, and we had to figure out where they went, and now trying to find one, there's, there's a dynamic that's happening all the time, so it, it really is important.
Very.
I'd be happy.
Well, Mr. Meyer and Mr. Self have seniority, but I will fill in or tag team or whatever wants, if either of them want to share.
We'll give you some names.
Yeah.
There's no reason why, actually why we all couldn't participate two at a time, so we don't overwhelm, and that way everybody, that way everyone gets the experience, the fun of going through the zoning code line by line.
Yeah, hours of operation, there we go.
Okay, we will, we will get you some names, that work. Okay, we have one last item, ladies, gentlemen, and that is S twenty-five dash five, Bridlewood, section one.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself.
All right, recuse away. Oh, this was tabled, that's right, okay. I need a motion then to untable, please.
Motion to untable S twenty-five dash five, Bridlewood, Bridlewood, section one.
Does it need to mention the, the August sixth twenty-five meeting?
That's when we tabled. From the sixth August twenty twenty-five meeting.
Okay, I have a motion.
I second that motion.
I have a second, and we'll do that by general consensus, A on everybody, okay. Thank you, ma'am, for keeping me honest.
Oh, hello, Colin Carville, City Planner, Bridlewood, section one, final subdivision, S twenty-five dash five, just jumping straight into this, the request is for a final subdivision approval, area is eighteen point five three three two acres, it's composed of twenty-seven single-family lots and three common area lots, there'll also be three point six five three three acres. lots. There'll also be 3.6533 acres dedicated of right-of-way across three different, three different roads there. Here's a look at the subdivision for this first phase here. Just a little bit of the development history. Obviously, we, we talked about the, the tabling history previously, but the site plan was approved in October 2024. This phase, this first phase, it represents 23% of the overall site plan. Lots 1 through 27, which will be the single-family residential lots, they vary from .203 acres to .484 acres, with the three common areas being .925, 9275 acres, 2.4895 acres, and 3.6947 acres, with, again, that right-of-way, 3.6533 acres being dedicated. The conditions for approval are, are pretty boilerplate with all of our subdivisions. As you can see on the screen, nothing, nothing specifically changed there, but that's, that's all I have. Staff is recommending approval with the listed conditions, excuse me. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Colin, before we get into questions, would you refresh our memories on why this was tabled back in August?
Yes, the, the developer was pretty far off from, from breaking ground and, and with their engineering drawings, so they really didn't feel comfortable with having a subdivision approved wait long before they, they started, started going. So it looks like they're getting close to, to having everything wrapped up here.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm just going to throw this open to have at it. Probably your turn first anyway, so go, go for it.
Okay, well, I have another question, so step there, Colin. So memory serves, because I've been at these meetings for a few years now, plus here on the commission, when this was first brought up in April 24 and eventually kept getting tabled, 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 and finally in October 24, it was brought before the commission, we approved 30 conditions, and it went before the, look at my notes here from them, went before the City Council who approved it. They added a 31st condition, and none of us got the conditions now, so I went back to the notes from last October
Sure.
and got the 30. But the 31st condition, which Vice Mayor Bales added, it was approved and seconded, or seconded and approved, added that they wanted to change the minimum size to 1,400 square feet instead of 1,600 square feet
Okay.
to allow more entry homes. So I'm assuming that not only do the 30 conditions carry over, but the 31st condition of lowering the size amount carries over as well? So this first development of 27 homes will include Vice Mayor Bales' motion and approved 1,400 minimum square feet, not the 1,600, which has been so far only thing published.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's, that's going to be the amended version, correct?
Yeah, it would, it might be helpful for us to get the amended 30 or 31 conditions.
Okay.
Because that would, those will be included for the 27 homes, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The, the other thing that carried over from that October council meeting was a number, and again, because we didn't have it for the first 27 homes now, was a, a large amount of discussion and possible amendments that were never better approved for particular easements to the adjoining area. So those will come up for this first phase of 27 homes, or are they to be brought up in a separate landscape plan? Because that was an open area of the October board, excuse me, the October City Council meeting, the October 23rd or whatever it was, City Council meeting of 2024, about a, a landscape buffer around the surrounding areas that Councilwoman Garcia and others brought up more than once.
Yeah, so the, the landscape plan isn't included i- in the subdivision. This is just kind of looking at what will be brought to Green County to, to be platted. That's a separate document.
But that's not something we will look at here?
Correct, yes. That's something that, that our director, Randy, approves internally and, and agrees upon with the developer.
When we had, when we had our meetings in 2024 with this developer, and then the City Council had their meetings, there was a number of discussions on construction traffic off of North Alpha-Belbrook Road because of the size of the road and the traffic generation. That would not be something we'd have to revisit again for the 27 homes now?
No.
It's already been addressed?
Yeah, it's been addressed, and they'd be held to that once construction commences.
The, the only other question I had, again, I'm reaffirming because we didn't have the, the packet here included. I went back and I looked at all of the City Council minutes and our Planning Commission minutes, and they pretty much aligned on everything that I've been bringing up for questions to you and Randy. And the only other question was on the trees that we mentioned earlier with Mission Point. If a tree happens to be taken down in these 27 home developments, and it's four feet, four inches or larger, they have to be replaced with a three-inch tree or larger. I'm assuming, again, it's landscaping, which is a topic that was brought up time and time again.
Sure.
They're held to that for these first 27 homes?
Yes, a- as long as grading, grading allows, we're working through kind of that, that landscape plan with them, but as long as grading allows for, for, we're trying to agree upon as persevering, or sorry, preserving as, as many trees as possible, but if grading doesn't allow, they'll lose them, and, and we'll kind of go through the, what kind of, what needs to be brought in place of that.
So we won't have to, again, from my own education, when they gave us back at, last year, back in, in October, and I'm holding this up so that Stephen can capture it on camera, from phase one all the way through to the end, we're not going to be going through this every single time, having to revisit the 30, 31 conditions?
No, sir.
Is it going to be automatic?
Exactly. The only, only thing will be those, those specific easements, when they, they come up in that specific phase, that'll reflect and appear on, on the subdivision. But, yeah, we don't have to rehash the, the original approved conditions of the specific site plan.
Okay. The only other, last question I have is just from my own education, we don't have one up on the screen, but there was something about a parcel of property on the other side of North Alpha-Belbrook, which was not to be included in any of our discussions, if I'm correct?
Yeah, correct.
So that's a separate development?
And I believe it's in the township?
It's in Beaver Creek Township, right.
Correct, yeah.
So it's not part of anything we'll have to deal with. It was just mentioned in the meeting minutes for our both council and ourselves October meetings. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're certainly welcome. Ma'am?
No questions.
No questions? No questions? I just wanted to, to, I guess, make, make sure every, we, we all understand, when you have an overall development that is going to be built in phases, the, the conditions for the entire development hold true for all the phases. We don't need to revisit them unless something has happened to possibly change one of those conditions. They've discovered that they can't do something because there's a sinkhole, and they've got to move a road or something like that. Otherwise, those 31 conditions that City Council passed will carry through to, how many phases of this? Three or four?
Four, I, three or four.
Well, pick your pick. It will carry through to all of the phases of this development, so basically we don't need to worry about them because they're still there. Okay, second, second helpings, folks. Okay, I need a motion.
Motion to approve S 25-5, Bridlewood, section one.
And I need a second.
I second that.
She got it in.
There you go.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If you would be so good as to read the roll.
Ms. Palumbo.
Yes.
Mr. Fountain.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Self.
Yes, motion carries four zero, and we are fresh out of, we ain't adjourned yet. Okay, we are, we are fresh out of items on our agenda tonight, so I'll ask for a motion to dismiss. Adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
Okay.
I second that motion.
And we'll do that with our feet. Thank you very much. Adjourned at 8:00.